This study session at Independent School District 535 School District is called order at 5:00 PM Tuesday, September 13, 2022 in room 137 of the Edison Building. This board acknowledges that this site and all our PS sites are situated on the ancestral lands of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535 where the livestream video may be found. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pecal, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Director Amundson.
Here.
Clerk Farlow.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director McLaughlin.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
And Director Workman.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to God, under the states of America, into the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved in second. If all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The agenda is approved. At the study sessions this evening, we have three focus topics. And the first one is the School Board Annual Board Calendar Draft. The School Board Annual Board Calendar Draft, annual board calendar draft, planning for 2022, 23. I know Dr. Pecal has something to say, but before that, I would like to thank both Dr. Pecal and Kathy Nathan. They have done an incredible amount of work on this. Kathy has spent a huge amount of time organizing everything in a way that only she can and making this really easy to understand, but there has been an enormous amount of thought and, and planning that's gone into this planning. And Michelle Severson has aptly supported all that kind of work. Dr. Pecal.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. I'll be very, very brief. Two points. One, the draft calendar that you're about to see now is reflective of the strategy that we discussed at our last study session. And so just wanted to connect the dots from that conversation about whether we should adopt this approach, which the answer was generally yes. And this is, as Jeanne mentioned, Kathy's in my attempt to actually operationalize that. We know it's likely not perfect. And so the one thing I wanted to let board members know is that while cabinet members have seen this very much in process, they have not seen what we're literally looking at tonight. And so I want to really encourage them to participate fully if they see issues that they want to have addressed. I have delusions of the fact that we could come out of this meeting, hopes and delusions, with literally the board's calendar quite well defined through the end of 2023. And so I'm eager to have this done so we can get moving. And with that, I agree with Jeanne. Thank you, Kathy, for all the work on this.
I think it makes all of our lives easier to be able to predict what our work is going to be for the next year. And I have to also give credit to Director Workman and Director Amundson because when we first created this document last year, we combed through all of the policies and all of years of previous agenda items and guidance to the topics that we normally talk about on a regular basis at the board. And it was those foundational documents that really created the ABCD we used the last year, and we just built on it for this year. So their work has been essential, so thank you. So the, as I said, the foundation was the ABCD that we developed last year in October that we've been using over this past year. And you have Attachment A in your board docs, which is a draft of what we have created from this date forward through the end of 2023. And the major changes come from including all of the strategic plan, focus topics, prep for action, action, as well as some of our key fundamental decisions we make as a board on our student achievement data through the World's Best Workforce Plan, the Achievement Integration Plan, and our budget process. So if you look at Attachment B, if you don't want to comb through the 20, sorry, 37 pages of Attachment A, and if you look at Attachment B, you see just the list of the key strategic plan items and the related monitoring pieces that we do. There's two major categories for the strategic plan items. There's the system change initiatives. Those are the district-wide that we're going to talk about tonight with our charge statements. And then there's the planning of the skip reports of the elementary, middle, and high schools that will be scheduled through the end of 2023. And I think I remember the superintendent, when he laid this out, said that we got to most of the secondary schools, but even having such a frequency, we're not going to be able to get to all the elementary schools in the first year. But we sort of knew that, looking, looking at the numbers. So I guess I'll stop at that point and just say, does anybody have any questions about just that component of what we've added to the plan?
Ms. Nathan, could you just clarify for people who aren't here and may be listening, what skip is?
I could, if I remember. Student contin- school continuous improvement plan.
Well, because you explained it well. These are the, the plans that each school has, but the skip thing, the S part is for the school.
Yes.
So it's, there's systemic things, and then there is school-specific plans.
Right. And when you look at the calendar, the school plans are identified as elementary school one or middle school one, and the superintendent will work on scheduling in which specific schools will present at which specific times in time for our agendas to be updated.
Thank you.
So the second piece is to look at some of where we've been and, and what we've accomplished because that helps us to figure out what we're still missing. So Attachment C is a list of all the info and outreach and focus topics and some of our important monitoring and action items that we accomplished over the last year. And these came from looking at what had been presented to school board meetings in the past, but also requests from board members. You know, for example, we covered all of the major academic areas in a focus topic over the last year, math and reading and social studies and arts and science. So if you were, if you were to take some time to look at Attachment C, I think you'd see that we got a lot done over the last year. So I think it's, it's a testament to scheduling works. And then the second piece to that, and that was the work that Director Workman and Director Amundson really contributed to, is an Attachment D. And that is looking at all the requirements in our board policy where the school board is required to approve, or review, or get a report, or receive data on a certain component related to our policy. And going through and looking at the last school board action date, we were able to be compliant with, with almost all of those policy requirements over the past year. And how we'll use that going forward is that there are few focus topic or informational topic items that we weren't able to get to last year, and we have tried to schedule those starting in October through the end of 2023, and those are on the last page of Attachment C. There are some focus topic items that are included, that will be included when we talk about the strategic plan, strategic initiatives. And then the items that are in the policy component will roll over to a similar date and a similar time to when we covered them in the agendas last year. And that will be primarily the responsibility of cabinet for those areas when they're bringing something to the agenda, or it's a decision that needs to be made, or it's a contract that needs to be approved. That process of adding things to the agenda will still happen. We won't be able to plan those necessarily months ahead, but we're going to continue to work on improving that communication flow between making a request for an agenda item, how it gets on the ABCD, and then how it finally gets on, on board docs.
You're magical.
So the plan then is perhaps on our next meeting or at some point in the not-too-distant future is to drop the D from the ABCD and actually have this be, the annual board calendar.
I would say yes and no because as we have described our board agendas, they're draft until we actually approve them at a school board meeting. And I know that there have been changes often sometimes up until the last minute. So I, I, I think I'm more comfortable keeping that draft there and maybe helping people who are watching our school board meetings understand everything is a draft until we're actually sitting at the table and approve the agenda.
Pause, doesn't that sound good? ABCD?
Oh, yeah, flows.
Nobody fails.
And we haven't learned over the last couple of years that, you know, we need to be ready to pivot and, you know, be fluid. So I think keeping it, keeping it fluid, keeping it a draft. Vice.
Anything else? Cabinet, board members, superintendent?
I think just, if I can, just to flag something that is going to be, we started talking about this yesterday in a meeting. This fall, in November, we will have a first pass at adapting our district's World's Best Workforce proposal to fit our strategic plan. And partly because of the way the state structures World's Best Workforce, and partly because we have an ambitious plan that has its own structure, that's not going to be a seamless fit. I'll be looking to Dr. Arv Bhamu and her team to help me with, with that. But that's a really important gateway in our process where in November each year, we take a look at how we're doing with our outcomes and set goals for improvement. And in June of each year, we take a look, and the board ultimately takes action on the investments that we're making in the strategy in terms of the budget and staffing. So that's not far away. And it's, I think it's going to be exciting, but it is definitely, there's a little anxiety on my part insofar as the state mandates the structure of World's Best Workforce, and it isn't a perfect fit with our plan, but we can make it work. So I'm just thinking ahead as I look at this calendar, which is good because the calendar pushes you to start thinking about deadlines, tasks ahead.
Anything else? Ready to move on? Great. Thank you again for, for your work, to the Policy Committee Superintendent Michelle. The next topic is 3.02, Strategic Plan System Change Initiatives. This is a review of the wave one charge statements. Dr. Pecal.
The, as Director Nathan just mentioned, we have a strategic plan that really moves on three levels. There's the guidance and monitoring that the school board does at the highest level. Then we have a set of system change initiatives that mostly involve multiple schools and many the entire district. And then we have a revised school improvement planning process, or the skip process, as Dr. Garcia just remembered. So you have reviewed and helped us sharpen that school improvement planning process, and we'll have our first update from one of our schools. I believe, Jackie, it's going to be Elton Hills, if I'm right? So coming at an upcoming board meeting. Today, we wanted to give the board an opportunity, both in this meeting and then over the next couple of weeks, to the extent that board members would like to take advantage of, a chance to review and give feedback on the specific charges that we're going to give to the teams that will develop the detailed plans for system change in our district. In the plan that you approved in June, you set very clear directions for change in each of these areas, but we all know the devil is in the details. And so what these teams are going to be doing is fleshing out those details. We begin this process next week, and so this meeting is intentionally timed to give you a chance to take a look at what I've put together here. In this process, we're sort of taking a page from the corporate world insofar as there's a few things we've learned about organizational change in the corporate world that I think are relevant for us in education, not everything, but some things. In part, with the process that we're going to talk about tonight, there's the core structure. There's a collaborative team that needs to make sure has critical perspectives represented on the team, and then a team that reaches out to other stakeholders to get their broader perspective. There's a team leader who is responsible for meeting the deliverables that the team is charged with. And then there's also what we've, again, taking a page from many corporate organizational roles. And that's the term that we've used for the member of the cabinet that is going to have responsibility for making sure that these change initiatives are on track and on time and staying true to their objectives, but also that is someone who can move the furniture and advocate for the people who are envisioning the change. And so I, my role will be trying to make sure that the entire process stays on track. The champion or cabinet member's role will be really being sure that we are true to the intent that the board approved in this change initiative. The team leader's role is going to be to guide our colleagues over what in most cases will be a multi-month process of coming up with those detailed plans for change. Really critically, in this process, you can't change your charge statement once it's approved. So you are now the first recipients of these draft charge statements. Tomorrow, all of our district-wide leaders in the district will get them. Next week, the team leads that are listed here will get them, and we invite any other feedback. By October 3rd, we want to have these charge statements quite clear and tight, and approval of changing a charge statement requires at minimum my involvement, and if it's strategic change, I'd come talk to you about it. So if, just to take an example that I know is not going to occur, we're our team to come back and say, yeah, we don't think increasing mental health supports for students and staff is actually an important priority. That would not be an acceptable accomplishment of their team charge. They are charged with finding ways to expand and enhance those supports. They can come back and tell us what it's going to cost, what the strategies are, what the challenges are, but the charge statement is really a non-negotiable, and each of these will be turned into a detailed implementation plan. So I don't want to read what is a very long document, and which, as I mentioned to you in an email earlier, I apologize for having gotten to you much later than I would have liked, but let me just briefly hit the change initiatives that are in our first year. As you will recall, there's two waves, and there's a kind of a cheat sheet at the front of this document. The first is our work on student-centered deeper learning. And you can see that the, the first deliverable there is, what does that mean? And there are some components of deeper learning that are listed in the charge that have come out of our strategic plan working group last year. Then there is, how do we revise curriculum, review and revise curriculum to integrate deeper learning into what we teach? Then how do we provide professional development to integrate deeper learning into how we teach? And then how do we convene professional learning communities together to help our teachers and other educators share what's working, learn from success, and, and learn from what doesn't work as they integrate that strategy, academic strategy into their work? Second system change initiative is multi-tiered systems of support. We are going to be first working with the University of Minnesota to review the status of those three tiers in our system. Foundational, strong curriculum for all students. Supplemental supports for students who can succeed in that curriculum but need additional supports. And then at the top of the pyramid, intensive supports for students who often do not participate in that foundational curriculum, though, though sometimes they can. So the first in, in the MTSS change initiative is conducting that review. A second, very important process is evaluating, developing a data system and a technology platform that will allow individual teachers, educators, our research director to really both drill down and aggregate that data so we can identify the students who need that additional support, both academically, but also socially, emotionally, and, and with other indicators. And then there's actually building out those tiers of support, strengthening our foundational curriculum, and coming up with those interventions for kids who are struggling. The third of our system change initiatives for this year is school belonging and behavior. As you know, we've had teams in all of our secondary schools working on this. The number one priority that came out of our summit in June was, was making sure every kid is connected, and so mapping relationships within our schools, including elementary schools, so that every schools, so that every student is known well by at least one caring adult. The second is really the organizational change piece, developing cultures which all of our students, and I would say staff, feel that they can be their full selves. And then finally, implementing a restorative approach to school discipline is the third component of that belonging and behavior. The fourth, which I was previously calling portfolio of schools, which was a little more confusing than system of schools, so that's the working title. Someone on that team may come up with a better way to put it. As you can see from the four bullets there, the cross-current across those is transportation, and that's why they're all grouped together. We know that we have a charge from you as a board to come back to elementary school start times and get them to a point where they work better for our young learners and for working families with young children. Second is to take a look at our district-wide option schools, and to be sure that that additional investment that they receive of resources for citywide transportation advances the board's educational goals for the system. The third is, we have a real need to look at the wonderful school we have, Longfellow Elementary, where we have a beautiful new building that has some space that is unlikely to fill from their current attendance boundaries. And so, an idea that has a lot of support within that school community is making it a K-8 like Lincoln, but there also could be other options that we need to take a look at for Longfellow. And then finally, developing a plan for a middle school area learning center. So, that is a challenging initiative that's there. The next change initiative, community partnerships to enrich and extend learning, developing a way of being sure that we really know who our key community partners are, and that we are continually understanding their priorities and working with them to serve Rochester kids, expanding out-of-school time activities, especially at the middle school level. And then, really, looking at the wonderful work that's happening in our community schools, but that frankly has a sustainability challenge, that we are funding that work largely with philanthropic state and federal funding, and that we need to take a look at the sustainability strategy for that work going forward. Next is leadership development. We know principals are a really, really critical role, and so creating a leadership development strategy for our current and school lead principals and assistant principals, also beginning to find pathways, or maybe that's a better metaphor than pipeline, which I wrote here, for future administrators who do want to do that, but then also, and this came out of our strategic planning process, for teachers who don't want to leave the classroom, finding ways that we can build their capacity and provide them with opportunities to lead in their school communities and on district-wide initiatives. Then we have the post-secondary pathways work, where we need to define what we mean by readiness, building on the graduate profile, but also looking at what we know our post-secondary institutions and our employers want. And then we need to develop a process, starting in elementary school, with early awareness activities and progressively focusing and helping young people focus more and more on life after high school. Then we have combined in this version what were previously two separate initiatives in student and staff mental health, as I talked with Connie Grimsrud and Dr. Arv Bhamu's department briefly a while back. These are really related initiatives. We know that the supports that staff and students need are different, but many of the community providers will be the same, many of our internal staff are the same, and so it really didn't make separate to have two separate teams. The initiatives that come out of the planning may be separate, but that this initial effort holistically to look at mental health, social-emotional supports for our students, and then staff as well. So, the three things that came out of our strategic planning process there. How do we have a proactive screening tool or process where we can identify students or staff who are struggling? Then, how do we actually also build the capacity of staff and our parents and other caregivers themselves to recognize people who are struggling? And then, most importantly, but also most challengingly, how do we expand options for treatment and support? Next to last, family engagement framework. How do we actually, first of all, define what is high-quality effective family engagement in Rochester Public Schools? And then, how do we continually build the capacity of our schools to be authentic two-way partners with our families? And then finally, the referendum funding, which is both in the budget reduction plan that you approved and in the strategic plan. Of course, this is not a campaign in this work. It is, first of all, to conduct outreach, to understand what the citizens of Rochester might be willing or want to support in terms of future funding through our operating referendum, and then to provide information to the community on the substance of that recommendation if you, as a board, choose to go in that direction, which, of course, we would be bringing you resources. So, you can see the rest of the document outlines pretty detailed charges that are in each of these. We'll be opening the floor now to thoughts and questions and suggestions, and you can also email me. I am candidly excited about having the completion of this process be a real pivot in my direct involvement, and then handing it over to Cabinet members and the leaders of these teams to really make this process work as we go forward. So, I'm, I sort of see, this is what was the Winston Churchill, the end of the beginning. This is kind of an important transition point in our process where we have clear change directions in each of these areas, and now we're about to empower teams and leaders to develop very detailed plans for realizing these goals. So, with that, Madam Chair, that is the overview, and be glad to open the floor for questions, suggestions, or I'll be watching my email, and we can follow up later.
We're waiting for others to gather their thoughts. It just occurred to me, you're the one that says, "Put first things first," and the first item on this list is student-centered deeper learning. Clearly, that's all about academics and helping every student gain not only the knowledge, but the ability to use that knowledge as they go forward, both in school and, more importantly, as they finish their school K-12 experience and go out into the rest of the world. And everything else on this list supports that. It's all about helping our students get what they need so that they can become intelligent, creative individuals. So, I'm pleased, I'm not sure if these were in any particular order, but that's.
That's number one intentionally. I think it's fair to say.
Good. I figured. Okay. Yeah, Dr. Garcia.
I will absolutely admit that I didn't have time to, like, in-depth look at this after it was uploaded, so mine are just surface level. The first one is it's multi-tiered with an L, and in the two places that it's spelled out, it's missing the L.
Whoops.
And I was also just having a reaction to the leadership development, the use of pipeline, because I think oftentimes when people think of pipeline in reference to school, it's the school-to-confinement pipeline, and I wouldn't want to make that connection.
Yep. Thank you.
But otherwise impressive. Thank you for sending this to us, and I see a couple people are TBD for who's going to be the champion or whatever, so I'd be interested in hearing those names when they come up.
Yeah, we're close, I think Amy is close to a hire in one of those areas. Will has recently made an important hire in one of those areas, so we're almost fully there for this work, and we will, we'll let you know when those are.
Yes. I'm Ms. McLaughlin.
Just a minor point, I don't quite understand the implementation of the Wave Two. Could you explain that a little bit, the timing of that?
Yeah, appreciate that. I didn't get it. So, our strategic plan is so ambitious that to try and do everything that is in the plan in this school year would be really stretching us very thin. And so, what we've broken it into is two waves. Not that all of the stuff that is before you now will be done by next fall, but that we kick off these intensive collaborative planning processes this fall for the first 11, and then we will kick off a similar process next fall for the other seven.
So, is it launching in fall 2022 or 2023?
2023. Whoops.
Thank you.
That's what I was confused by.
Thank you.
For launching and then.
That's actually the second time I've made that mistake, so.
And probably the second time I've.
Yeah. No, thank you. You're right. Good catch. And I should say on that point, Dr. McLaughlin, I know we've talked about this, because some things in Wave One definitely doesn't mean we're not intensely working on Wave Two, and the converse is also true. Things like staff reduction, recruitment and induction is very much happening this year, but we're going to not launch the major change process next fall.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else? This is, it's an incredible document, and I, you nailed it. Absolutely. All right. We will move on then to 3.03 Board Handbook Development. One of the school board's goals that we adopted for this school year is to improve board communication with stakeholders, and a measure that we had was by January 1st, 2023, to create and approve a board handbook that describes the school board's roles and responsibilities, and includes our board's procedures and protocols. Now, when we adopted that goal, I had a vision that that would be a fairly narrow handbook, not size-wise, but in terms of the content. So, it would provide a very succinct description to the community about what school boards do and how they operate, how the agenda's put together, comments to the board, that type of thing. Ms. Nathan and I had a really good discussion about perhaps, and we need that, perhaps we also need a handbook that describes to school board members exactly what the job is, how we operate, and it goes into quite a bit more specificity in terms of what policies are and a number of other issues, the kind of thing that the school board, Minnesota State School Board Association expects every school board member to know. Kathy put online a sample of handbooks from a couple of different districts that you've had an opportunity to look at, and I think, my first question is, and Ms. Nathan, I want you, because we have this discussion, I think it's appropriate for us to co-facilitate. What's your vision about what this handbook should involve? Who is the audience for the handbook or handbooks? We could have two. Mr. Barlow?
Well, I reviewed both of the handbooks, and there are similarities that they both had, and while I liked, and I want to be careful, because I don't want to necessarily compare by name this particular district or that particular district. I suppose I would prefer Example A or Example B, but I didn't like how Lakeville.
Nice jump, Mr. Barlow. You just outed Lakeville.
Yeah. I liked the actual content structure, though the other one, I like how they went into greater detail. So, I kind of see the board, this handbook, being both inward-serving yet outward informing, if you will. Though you've suggested the possibility of having two potential handbooks, for want of a better word, we definitely need one for, I believe, our own internal purposes. And, yeah, I see great value for the community, because often there are questions they have and statements they make that had they had access to a handbook, they would maybe realize, oh, you know? And even for potential candidates, I like how one of the school board's very clear in governance and management. It's so important to see that, and then also the role that policies play versus, yeah, we're going to get them there, we're going to do this, and we're going, well, there's policies that actually determine what you're going to do or not do. And so, I'm all in favor of having a handbook that somehow is able to incorporate both aspects. And also, if I may, I'll be brief. In looking at these handbooks, I realize how unique Rochester Public Schools is. Okay. I had made a number of notations myself, just whether it's the culturally linguistic responsive teachers, you know, when we seek of our classroom environment, I think that's unique, that should be part of the handbook. We should speak to that so that board members can know, the community can know. The elements of that envoy, you know, I'm not going to go through all of these things. I like the usage of what I'm termed as the language converter, how at many, and I'm drawing from our website, okay? But that was important, and maybe even for the handbook to have links that convert, you know, this important information into other languages. And I'll just stop at that point. I don't want to go further beyond what you initially asked, but.
Okay. Thank you. The questions that Ms. Nathan put on the website, and for which there was a Google doc that you could use, was what do you wish you'd been told before or when you were first elected to board? And I think, Mr. Barlow, what you were saying is that it would be useful to have that kind of information available to board members, and that also, we need information for community members, which may not be quite, provide them with not quite that extent of knowledge. But other feedback about, do we want to go forward with preparing a handbook for potential or for current school board members? Dr. Garcia?
I do have comments, but then a yes to your question.
Okay. Thank you.
Because I think that the audience, I mean, we can write it for everyone. I mean, it really is just about which labels we use, and I think it will have utility for both or multiple, right? So, groups of people who may consider running, the people who are already in office, and then other people who are looking at it as like a historical or factual document of information. So, it could technically be used by anyone in this room. I feel like the type of document would also be helpful, so while it would be nice, I suppose, to have a physical printed copy, that would be glorious, but if there was a, an e-version of it somewhere so that pictures or links could be cycled out easily, and you can just pull from, you know, whatever you need, because I really appreciated the one that had, because I had written for myself, like, can we get a yearbook or a directory of faces? Because Karen and myself started during the pandemic, and so I heard all the names, and I had no idea who those people were, except for the ones that had pictures already on the district website. So, to have all of that together would be great. And I will add mine, my responses to the Google docs. I'm seeing that a couple people are editing it right now, but the ones that don't already exist, at least I think, for me, it was specifics on time expectations would have been helpful to know before running, and I asked different people, and they each gave me a different response. So, like, I guess then in my mind would be the specifics on time expectations, like how off or how long do board meetings typically run, and how many committees you're expected to be on so that they at least have that to anchor themselves, and however much they want to spend, and prepping is, you know, kind of on them. And what is expected of, like, scheduled to happen prior to us attending office, because I remember thinking like, oh, I would find out whether I win or lose in Ju, or I'm sorry, in November, and then by January is when I would be ready to start. But there was automatic, like, nope, you need to come in and do this, and we have this training, and all of these things that occurred before January 1st, or 5th, I guess, for us. And so, knowing our actual board schedule, and then post-election, pre-swearing-in schedule would be helpful. Somebody, I think, has started to write a little bit about this, but for me, it was clarity on the difference between our ethics versus state law versus tradition. So, I came in and was told, "We can't do that," and I was not always sure, except for when I could look at a law or look it up in policy, why that was. And oftentimes, I felt like it was more of a tradition rather than a supposed to or a have-to. We also had a Great Lakes Equity Center DEI workshop prior to starting, and I feel like that's the kind of work you do when rapport is already built and none of us had rapport with each other. And so, I feel like you don't do something like that as an icebreaker or as an introduction to a group, and so it would be nice to have a chance to build rapport with people prior to something like that, because who wants to be vulnerable in saying, "This is how I internalize racism," or, you know, "Put it out in the world," or "This is my homophobic bias on this thing," right? Like, nobody wants to be able to just open up and share those things with people they don't know.
And Dr. Garcia, I can add to that. I think it was also the same week as the election.
Yes.
So, it was.
It was like Tuesday, and then like Wednesday, Thursday, or something like that. We had to be ready for that training.
It was rough. Yeah.
I was like, I didn't know. I was like, I didn't know that. So you didn't know until you were, we knew after the election results, I think, were certified, at least at the state level. And so I didn't know that until like that Tuesday evening, that we had like that Thursday, Friday, or whatever training, and that was, it was rough. Also, in terms of documents, I think a lot of people put already some of the things that I had written, but the Robert's Rules of Order training with enhanced understanding of what we already know now via our TELA meetings, because I think that that's not very clear in obviously the most recent books. So how, and also like basically how to add things to the agenda, how to read the agenda for some people, I think all of us kind of came in, or at least Karen and myself being new, or we already had an awareness of that, but doing it via Zoom was really difficult initially, because I'm like, wait a second, when am I supposed to enter my vote, and how would I do that, or if I want to talk, like, are we raising hands and things like that, like, what is the technical procedure? Also, something that came up, I think, for us, some of us the first time, is mandated reporting. So when we get a report from a constituent, what our expectations are and who we are supposed to report those things to, I know Carla Volason sent out a response to us about some of those things, but I think like just people knowing that you are, you are a mandated reporter, even though you're on the board, and this is what you need to do in that respect. And then Karen, I think, is sort of identifying this in her comment, but an established meeting with a superintendent and at least cabinet members so that we can get to know who everyone is, as well as official and unofficial climate and culture of the board, so that we know who and where, and where we're safe or where we're perceived to be safe, and who we might go to, and how that should be done in this space.
Okay, I hear, thank you. Both you and Mr. Barlow are saying we do need a handbook for school board members, and then all are part of that also available to the community, so they have a better idea. And part of what you're talking about is what should be in the handbook, and those are the questions, you know, that Kathy asked and that are being posted on the doc. What do you wish you had known? What information do you wish you'd had? What questions did you have? That would make up then this handbook that we're looking at. Now, as you recall, when we passed this goal, decided that this would be a goal for the board, we volunteered the policy committee to do this, and they were very, variant, as I recall, enthusiastic about taking this on. So at this point, I can see the policy committee members are already taking notes. And if you would like to sort of, at this point, get input from others who have questions that they had or information they wish they had, and you can call on people to continue the discussion.
Chair Marvin, I did have one more comment. I think it's one thing that's missing from the two examples that we have, is I agree that the audience, you know, we can determine what the audience is, but if, I agree with Director Barlow, that I think it should be both, in the community, some community aspect, some board aspect, but I think the titles of the documents need to reflect that, that neither of these examples reflect that, and I think if we tweak the title enough, I think that would become more clear of what the audience is. Who the audience is.
Policy board member, Ms. Workman, you can just call on yourself.
Yeah, I'll call. So I think when Melissa and I did the School Board Academy, you have the outline here of what we've talked about, and I think those are all good things to, that would be understandable by the public without going into the weeds of, you know, which workshop do we have to go to, what does MSBA require, what does statute require? This is more of a, I don't know, 20,000-foot, 30,000, 100,000-foot view?
It swoops up and down a little bit.
Yep. Yeah, it did. I mean, basically, I think the comments we got overall were very positive, and people felt that they were more informed when they left than when they come in, which is good. But, you know, were they starting at zero and going to one, or starting at zero and going to 100, or, you know, we don't know what the nature of that might have been. But I think unless somebody else objects or wants to come up with something different for the important stuff for the public to know, I would suggest that we start with the outline from these two evenings on April 11th and April 18th. It was, it doesn't look like it, but it was a lot of work to put this all together. And I would really hate for somebody else to have to feel like they need to reinvent the wheel here when they can just, you know, borrow something that we've already created.
Director Workman, can I make a suggestion? I would suggest the last two, the filing for office and campaigning, those might be a separate section. I see those as different from the others.
Then if I may, so Chair Marvin, you're, based on 3.03, you're actually saying, any additional comments, thoughts, we should go ahead and access the Google Doc, place those comments in there for the policy committee to consider and to incorporate in the development of the handbook, whatever that might look like. We're, they've been entrusted with responsibility, you're not asking us to do that tonight, but the policy committee will indeed do that.
And I'll leave that to the policy committee. Time for a discussion this evening, or would you prefer having people simply go to the Google Docs and put in their ideas there?
I think it would be helpful if people have ideas that they've shared here, that they also go put that stuff into the Google Docs so that we make sure we, you know, catch everything that's there. One question that I had that I noticed with both of Farmington schools and Lakeville was that both of them borrowed extensively from TeamWorks. Jean, you were on the board then, weren't you, when you did all that with Dennis Cheesebro? I can't remember which term it was. And I don't know if that's something that the board would want to pursue using that material at all. You know, we went through a pretty specific, you know, training and explanation of what it was and how it worked and all of that, so I would appreciate some feedback from my fellow board members on that.
Well, I'm familiar with some of the TeamWorks materials. I almost would rather us look at something that we have agreed is our approach for this board as opposed, I mean, if we had had the TeamWorks training as this board, and we are committed as this board to have that training every year, I would say that would be the structure. But since our trainings come from MSBA, I would rather use materials, and most of those same topics that are covered in the TeamWorks materials are covered in the, in the MSBA pieces that we get at those four, and some of the supplemental information. So we don't have, we do not have to, and I agree with Director Barlow, this, I think this handbook is going to look like Rochester's situation. And I think we have enough good examples and resources to cover the same topic without having to go to those sources. That's my opinion.
Other comments, questions?
Can I answer your other question? I obviously would love for people to put their comments in the Google Doc. I just want to make sure before we leave here tonight that everybody is sort of on the same page with the direction the policy committee is going to take. And we may ask some of our other board members perhaps to author a section. There's a section of this that we might reach out and say, you know, we think your voice in this would be really helpful, or at least help to write it so that it does reflect the whole board's experience and perspectives. And you can turn us down.
Would you include feedback and comments in that? Ideas?
Yeah, you all will get a draft, and you all, there will be feedback and comments, but in the initial, in the initial drafting.
And just to reassure the public on this group editing process, in terms of it violating an open meeting type of thing, it's going to be an input, input basis, correct? Rather than, there's not going to be any discussion that takes place in the document, it's just people leaving their comments on the document, which will in some way be folded into the final product.
Right, and when you see the final product, usually, or at least what I do, is note how the input was incorporated in the final product. And that will be part of the final document that appears on board docs. So yes, the public will be able to see the input and the output.
And, and a reminder to board members not to create a discussion in the document.
And my assumption, policy committee, is that this then will come to the board after it's been sent out for edits, come to the board for a vote of approval.
Before January 3rd?
So we're going to meet like on December 31st or something?
Our last regular meeting is December 13th.
No, and Director Workman, I appreciate your, your idea about using much of what you and Melissa went over in the School Board Academy. Certainly, that is the kind of information that was provided for both candidates and for others who are just interested in the school board.
And I think that's maybe more what the public might be looking for rather than for somebody who's just onboarding the school board, or somebody who's been here for a while and forgotten everything they've learned in the subsequent years, you know, that I think it's, it's really good to have that for the board.
Yeah. No, and I, I think that that's more in keeping with what our goal was initially. However, you know, it's become very clear that having the kind of document for, again, for new school board members or people who want, are really interested in the specifics of school board, to have that available, because we don't now. All the information's out there, but it's not in one place. And so I think this will be really valuable. And thank you, all of you three, for agreeing to do this work. And you never actually agreed to it, but.
Volunteered. I think the electronic version of it, not dissimilar to how we have our agendas, is sort of what I meant about, like, everything can be combined into one, but like our agenda has the information needed, like our policies and procedures, right? Like, you go to that item, and it's clear which policies and procedures we're talking about, but unless you want to click on the link to read the full document, you don't need that. So what is initially shareable or viewable can be the, you know, community-wide version, or the, you know, the CliffsNotes version of what it means to have this handbook, or what the handbook is used for. And then we, as board members, can then choose to go deeper down that clickable link hole of where we're supposed to be or what information we need. So I think it would also mean that we would need to maintain that, because I remember when I was first going through the policies and procedures, like, I was printing them out, and I was going through all of the links, and not all of them are active, or some of them were deactivated when I first started. So we would have to maintain that as well for us and for the community.
Policy committee, do you have the information you need to move forward?
I have, I have one more question. Do you want us to come back with, like, in a study session with, or at a meeting with a brief, you know, back and forth discussion, or do you think it can all be resolved through comments that we're getting from the Google Docs? Or what's the rest of the board's preference?
Well, I mean, this is something that you're going to be leading the way, you can certainly make that decision. My thinking is that if you could give an update, you know, in a month or two about what, what you're finding, what the roadblocks are, what you still need, and, and certainly, you know, I think as Kathy said, other board members can and probably should be involved in doing some of the work, because this is going to be a big lift. It's important, but it's going to, it's going to take some real time. So I think others, including me, I would be happy to assist in any way. But is, does that seem reasonable, to get an update and then?
And I also think there's a, there's a piece of our Series 200 Policies and Procedures that are relevant to the school board, that we've talked about codifying some of our, what we have been calling protocols, into procedures that are associated with our school board policies. So as a parallel track, we'll bring those to the board for your approval. And that's an example of what Dr. Garcia says, you know, like in our student handbook, where we list the policies, but there's a link that takes you to the detail of what's in the policy. So a lot of that will be approved as we're developing the content of the handbook.
Great. Good job, thank you. Is there any other business that needs to come before, or business, any other ideas for the board at this time? Hearing none. It is 5:54, and we are adjourned.